Twenty-eight, twenty-two, twenty-four, like to call the, well, yeah, call the meeting to order. Uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Hearst?
Present.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Here.
Ms. Metz? Ms. Gregory?
Here.
Mr. Fowle?
Yes, here.
Mr. Sodder?
Here.
All right, uh, next on the agenda is the Board of Adjustments vacancy.
Yeah, I just wanted to notify the mayor and council that we have another vacancy on the Board of Adjustments. We don't have any other candidates who have applied. We're going to re-advertise on our website and Facebook page and so forth. But if you know someone who's interested in serving that capacity, please have them contact me. You know, note, letter, something about their interest and why they're interested in serving on the Board of Adjustments so we can get another member appointed. As you may recall, we changed the minimum for a quorum from four to three. So as long as the remaining three members show up, we can have a meeting. So we're going to give it a shot here next week.
Who, so who was the one that, uh?
Deborah Miller.
Oh, really?
She moved up next to Anthony.
Oh, no kidding?
Oh, yeah. So can't, can't, can't fault Grandma for moving up there, but yeah, we're going to miss it.
So there's two openings on the Board of Adjustments?
Uh, no, is it, there's just one, isn't it?
I think there's just one. We still have four.
We still have four, yeah.
Okay.
But, but obviously it's hard because not all show up every meeting. So you've got to have, you need extras.
All right, uh, next on the agenda is the Council Chambers Technology Update.
All right, um, I would preface this with the, uh, this packet probably went through more versions than any packet I've ever prepared here. I hope, I believe you all have the latest version. The next set of paper that's stapled together should be all the information that is contained about what the staff is recommending. So to go back and, and we talked about some modifications to this room and modifications to Village Hall as a whole. Um, what the approach that I took was that because of the budget limitations, I'm breaking it into three pieces. The first piece is the technology update. That's what we're going to talk about tonight. And if you are so inclined, there would be a resolution at the next regular meeting to authorize those purchases. That I would see as the next step if we want to make any changes to the room itself. Whether that's painting, carpet chairs, whatever you want to do, and look at a budget just for that. And then the last piece would be whether or not we're going to do anything else with the rest of the building. We have a shortage of offices if we're going to grow. And so, uh, so that, that's, that's what I'm going to suggest. I will tell you that the, uh, and you can, you can see in the packet, there's, the second page has some numbers. What I did was I got Mr. Flannery, who's our IT guy together with WMPA, and they worked together. And so this is equipment that is both on the IT side but also for, for Tom. There are some prices on the second page, uh, but they initially forgot the microphones. So the microphones are near the back. But the bottom line is that the resolution, if we upgrade everything that we need to, is going to be somewhere between fifty-three and fifty-five thousand. So I would expect if you will entertain a resolution not to exceed fifty-five at the next meeting and we'll start making the upgrades. So you can certainly take some time, go through this, if you have any questions before the next meeting, uh, about exactly what we're buying. But this is a list taken totally from Mr. Flannery and, uh, Tom. Do you have any questions? Yes, sir.
Yes, um, refresh my memory. I was trying to look at my budget real quick to see what did we?
I thought we put fifty thousand, but that was for everything. That was when we were going to do the room and whatever. So this is, this is about twice what I thought we were going to spend on technology.
Okay, so fifty, where you thought half of that was going to be towards technology, and now we're looking at fifty or over?
Fifty to fifty-five, yeah. But it's everything, it's everything in here. It's monitors on the wall, getting rid of all the wires. It's doing everything that will cover for at least five. Tom thinks maybe ten years. Technology's changing rapidly. But it's, it's new microphones. It's, it's everything upgraded that hasn't been upgraded in quite some time. Tom, do you want to add anything to, uh, to this discussion?
Yeah, I'm going to modify your modify, I think, here. Uh, one item we can, the more I think about it, the more I think we ought to kick this can down the curb a little bit. Um, it's a, it's a item listed as a storage array. I do need some archival storage badly. That's something, you know, there's, there's a lot of history back there and I'd hate for it to go poof. But that's a good price tag and, and quite honestly, the more I think about it, um, just the way technology's going and all that, it might be better if we wait a year or two. Um, we might want to look at something called a CDN, Content Delivery Network, AWS, Amazon. And at that point, we could use that for backups and archival storage. It also gives this ability at that time, too, if we wanted to have it where people can download videos or, you know, buy a basketball game maybe down the road or something like that, it'd open up those avenues, too. So the more I think about that, maybe I'm jumping the gun a year or two on that particular item.
Well, I would suggest is we'll probably stick with the numbers. If we don't buy everything, that doesn't mean we have to spend it all.
But there are some savings in here. I, I have no doubt the monitors are going to come in less than what's listed on there.
Obviously, we'll do our best. These are numbers we hoped are high.
And these aren't government quotes either. These are just list prices, too. So once you figure that in, it's going to drop.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I got a question about microphones and audio. So I know we get the complaint a lot about being heard. Both by, sometimes by those that are present and those that are online. And I, for one, would like to be able to capture audio on us to be heard wherever we're at in the room. So if we wanted to reorganize and sit back down at the tables for our, you know, workshops again, that way we could capture audio if we're sitting down there or if we're sitting up here or whatever.
Yeah, the mics that I quoted would be replacements for all these up here. So we had the DS mics. They'd be very similar to what we got now, except these are nineteen ninety-two, so they're thirty years old. I tried to get some with a little bit of range to them, too, but they'll have mute buttons as well. So if you need to mute and cough or what have you, they'll have some mute buttons. And then out here, we're looking at getting some wireless mics so we don't have to run the cables and have the trip hazards on the floor. And those would be ones that we could put on the tables. If you went back down there, I could put a micro, I've got four of them. I could put them on each table and we'd probably be fine because they'll have a little wider range than what the DS mics probably.
Is there anything like ceiling microphones?
They are, but I, I, that'd be something to revisit if you ever redid this room. You know, carpet in here would probably look a little bit, you know, down the road. So that's something we could definitely visit down the road.
Yeah.
I'd like to get a couple out here because, you know, a lot of people don't bother to come up to the lecture room. So I've looked into them, but yeah, I was going to wait to see what you did with the room before I hung anything from the ceiling.
So I see here the IT labor, uh, support labor. So are you looking to do, you and Mr., what's his?
Flannery.
Flannery.
We, we could do a lot of, you know, in terms of getting the equipment working and networked and all that. Him and I got that covered. But, you know, these cameras will be powered by ethernet cables, so that's technically a low voltage electrical. So probably best to have a professional. I could do it, but probably not up to code. So it would be, you know, yeah.
So you would contract with someone to do all that, the electric work?
And everything, everything, all the cameras, just, everything's done through that ethernet cable, power, motion control, video transmission. So it'd be a nice clean look. I'm having cables kind of downping walls anymore. It'll be nice. Should set us up for the next ten, fifteen years.
So some of these things that you have on here, I'm assuming, you know, they're upgradable and, uh, you know, the, the life expectancy, the longevity, I think you, uh, manager Sheridan said ten years.
Ten years is always my goal for anything I put in, in this building permanently. And I've always, you know, exceeded that, so.
Okay.
But yeah, ten years is cool. If I, stuff that I take out in the field, you know, I just, I always budget five, but I've had, I've had good luck there, too. I haven't dropped a camera in twenty-five years. So not going to go there, too, but, uh. So, yeah, I'd say that'd be at least ten years. Um, the switch we're getting back there would be like a ten gigabyte ethernet switch. And, um, everything's going online. Um, even the switching of cameras, you used to have a hardware, piece of hardware back there. I'm going to use a computer this time, but ten years from now, we swap it. It'll probably be all, you'll bring up the web browser and do everything, everything online. That's just the way the industry's going. Everything. So bandwidth is key and good internet connection is key for the future. That's just the way it is. You can't avoid it anymore.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Do you, if you said this, I apologize, but do we know like the total amount we budgeted? Is it separated in line items?
Not necessarily. Uh, I believe it was fifty thousand. I'm ninety percent sure it's fifty thousand.
Okay.
And the capital improvements, we've got forty for council chamber upgrades.
Okay.
And then there was like another line item in capital for three thousand for microphones and stuff. So Jeff's number of fifty, I think, is probably.
And, you know, and I got some money in the cable account, too, so.
Okay. Um, I saw the number of iPads, fourteen, so I know that we were.
Not sure we're going to buy fourteen, but that was the maximum number, I think, that Mr. Flannery thought everyone on the day has had one and the chief and whatever. So they're all compatible.
Oh, okay. 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 So really, taking a good look at this, ultimately, we probably could trim some of this down, uh, a little bit, cost-wise. I'm always.
I would expect to be as frugal as possible, Mr. Flannery.
Okay. Okay. All right.
So with the, uh, large TVs hanging on the wall, you got three in the plan. Where are you looking at this?
We have one over here to replace this one. It's ten plus years old, I think. And then probably just two, just two up on the wall, over here on the east wall. So one will be on the broadcast, much like that is. Another one will be for PowerPoint presentations. Or if you're talking to zone in an issue, anyone bring up a map, you know, it'd be used for multiple use type events. This would be the plan.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else?
Start to finish, working all this, I mean, what do you think, a couple of months?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
A lot of it's, a lot of it's plug and chug. Once the, once the electrical and all that connection's in, it's just assigning IP addresses and hooking it all up to the switch and.
Seamless, yeah. Okay.
Until I start hitting the wrong buttons. I'll take a couple more months after. Old dog, new tricks.
Sorry, I know I kind of asked this, but back to the ceiling. Um, would it help to do that part now? Like, do you have a lot of wires that need run through the ceiling? Like, should?
I have a lot of wires up there now. In fact, when, when we get this all switched out, you'll be amazed how much comes out of there. So.
Should that be part of this phase of Reno? Like, I know it's not council chamber, but if he needs up there and this could definitely use.
Yeah, I could, I can, I'll be able to take the current, I'll take the current wiring out if it's not used anymore.
It's not my area of expertise, so I've deferred to he and Mr. Flannery.
There's fifty years of people just tossing cables up there and running it over the drop ceilings. So it's.
But I agree with you. If we're gonna.
Yeah, if you're up there and taking out tiles, like, why don't we just put in the new drop ceiling or what, I mean, whatever option for light and, like, while we're at it, possibly. I don't know if we trimmed something from this to go into the next year of room Reno.
Well, let's, let's do this. If, I'd suggest have him look into it, get me some numbers, and we'll see if we need to adjust it when we bring you. When we bring you the resolution at the next meeting.
Yeah, because if we eliminate the eight thousand from the storage array for another time, maybe that's something, I agree. I think that would be great to do it all at the same time.
But your access to all this, you're pretty much going up with a giant ladder into this one, disconnecting, and then at the other end, you're just pulling the wires out, right? You're not removing all these ceiling tiles to do this.
No, I'm removing select.
Opening that one, that one, that one.
It's a few more in that because unfortunately, this is like three, between here and my rooms, like, three different buildings.
Okay.
So there's walls that go up, and you've got to go up and over wall heads. It's just, yeah, it's in the.
But in each room, you're probably removing just a few ceiling tiles, correct?
About two back in the back and probably about four in here.
Okay.
And one or two in the.
So we're not looking at a mass removal of ceiling tiles? Okay.
But it's, like I said, there's, it's a wiry mess up there.
I, I don't see it, like, we got the iPads on there and I don't know what we need, but, um, some type of software that allows us to interact, uh, when working on documents and stuff. I don't know whether that's a subscription to Microsoft Teams or, or what. But, and that's just something down the road to think about, but just how, these are tools for productivity.
Yes.
How, how can we use them to interact? How can subcommittees use them to work on shared documents? How do we join the technology revolution here and work smarter?
Mr. Flannery sort of hinted that we got some, some off-Microsoft suites allow you OneNote, OneNote, some other things allow you guys to do that kind of thing. So. We touched on that a little bit.
Maybe somebody like the mayor or somebody that's more technologically savvy than the rest of us, give us a, maybe a tutorial in small groups because we can't meet as all at one without being a special meeting. But I, I think it would be worth us to know how to use them correctly and how to use them efficiently and proficiently.
Yeah, Mr. Flannery's confident we got, we got enough in the Microsoft suite to be able to handle our needs here.
That'd be awesome.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
All right.
Hey, next on the agenda is the proposed ordinance for CM twenty-five dash zero four.
All right, Mayor, if you look in your packet, it's probably, the actual ordinance is, I think, the fourth stapled document back. It says on the top, ordinance CM twenty-five dash four. And the three pieces in front of it are informational about that. So the first one is comparison of pre-ninety-four and post-ninety-four commercial CRAs and changes to pre-ninety-four CRA. Uh, this is one of the two pieces of legislation that's been requested to be passed when and if we go into a regular session tonight. The first is an ordinance. The second is a resolution that moves the financing of Stillwater Crossings North forward to the next step. I believe the timeline in here shows that if you stay on schedule at the earliest, it would be completed by the end of March. And that's assuming you don't miss any steps. So, um, does anyone have any questions? I, I did compare. The ordinance is almost identical to the one that was passed for the south side. I don't believe the language has changed much other than the description. And I'll be glad to, or perhaps the law director, one of us will be glad to try to answer the questions that you might have about the ordinance.
So there's no substantive change between the two, other than the parcel descriptions and the locating factors?
Yeah, that's my read.
So it's identical to what we agreed to for the south side, for the, the TIF portion.
Yeah.
Is basically, in layman's terms, that's what we're looking at here.
Correct me if I'm wrong, uh, because it's pre-ninety-four, the language is identical. When we get past that, if we ever do a project that's post, then it'll be very different language, primarily dealing with the school. But yeah, this is, this is the template for pre-ninety-four CRA.
So with this ordinance, we're not agreeing to anything that we didn't agree to on the south side?
That's correct.
I would just like to add to that conversation a little bit that what we discovered, the, the whole thing of the pre-ninety-four TIFs and CRAs, why they did away with them is because they don't funnel money back to EMS services, fire, police, um, schools. And just what we've learned from that is, is a negative impact. We've, uh, honestly, I don't know that we've ever had a worse relationship with the school. And part of that is the fallout of this. And I don't know that we've ever struggled to have a relationship with our EMS service prior to us doing the pre-ninety-four TIF and CRA. So the two things that are the expected outcome of it, we've experienced. I don't know that moving forward with a, another one's going to affect that relationship that much, but just take into account that. And then I would also point out that I didn't understand, and this is just on me, maybe you explained to me, maybe just to get through my thick skull, that, that the way the CRA and the TIF wrap around each other, that, you know, we kept saying commercials fifteen years on the TIF. I was under the assumption that after fifteen years, that, you know, uh, tax, you know, tax money started coming through, uh, from that. But it's, the commercial is TIF'd for fifteen years under the TIF and another fifteen years under the CRA. So when we think about it, we need to think about the, the, how the money flows on that. It, it isn't, it isn't just fifteen years and then we start getting tax money from Randall House or any other commercial development. And just me personally, I didn't have my head wrapped around that. Um, so when you're trying to figure out money and this, that, and the other, it just wasn't adding up to me. And I just want to make sure everybody else understands that, too. Because if I missed it, I guess anybody else could have missed it. And it's just, this is just so much to understand. It really is. So that's just my two cents on that.
So the part we're missing out on, though, is property tax, right? And our part of the property tax is, what did we discuss last week? Thirteen percent of thirteen percent?
So what we get from the TIF and the CRA wrapped around, we get the unimproved.
Right, right. I get that for the thirty years. But I'm talking about what we're missing out on for the improvement time for that thirty years. You're only looking at a very small, small portion anyway that comes to us, right? Or that would, if the TIF wasn't.
Over the thirty years, if the TIF wasn't in place, we would get millions of dollars over thirty years on the, on the improved value. The, the TIF puts in place, pays for the infrastructure.
Right.
So, so, but, but yeah, so we, we miss out significantly. And throughout the life of the TIF, we're responsible for the, the other costs.
But property taxes aren't a big source of our revenue, right?
No, seventy percent, seventy, seventy percent of our, of our, uh, budget is income tax.
Seventy-five percent.
Yes.
Even, even worse.
Yes. Which I'm not suggesting is a good thing.
No, it's not. And one of the whole things with the development was, was to, to get commercial and to develop, uh, other resources that way so that we had jobs and that, that, for people who aren't in our village already are paying one point five percent on their, their things. And plus, there's a little bit of flowback from the, the other sales tax stuff that goes to the state and then trickles back down to the village through the county. It's very hard to figure that out. Jill sent me some stuff. I'm not even pretending to say I can put a number on that, but there, there is a mechanism. So when we have businesses, doing businesses, a sales tax, there is a mechanism in which that comes back. Now, it's not dependent on how much sales we have in our area versus another. So that has no impact on it. It's just like a fixed amount based on your, what's melting, you know, you're going to get this. So it, it, uh, it all, it all ties together. I went down a pretty deep rabbit hole just trying to understand the, the money aspects of the, the, the TIF and the CRA and, and all that. And, um, uh, to, to say, just because we did it on the south side, it's good for the north side, I would have to say there is some negative outcomes from having done it on the south side in relationships that, that play a role. And we are taking big steps to amend those, especially with EMS, have some good meetings and come to some understandings and have a different understanding of some things. And hopefully, we get that completely where it needs to be. And I would say we're hopefully really on track to that. And I would say we're hopefully really on track to that. But when you look at, I went down the rabbit hole, what does cost for everything? And what, you know, what's it cost for us to put up a water tower? In 30 years, we're gonna have to paint it, in 30 years, it's gonna have to be re-inspected, and what's it gonna cost to pave out there? And in the end, at the end of this rabbit hole, much to probably, all the questions I've asked the city manager there, it comes back to, in all likelihood, this TIF will be paid off, the bonds will be paid off early. And we should understand how early are they potentially paid off, based on, I think we're averaging 36 homes a year on the build-out, how quickly that tax rolls into paying the bonds off. I feel like we should really understand when the bonds are done being paid off, what happens to the money after the bonds are paid off? Because the TIF doesn't go away. I was under the impression that at the end of the bonds, you know, it's all done, but the the nine mil levy stays in place for the residents within the TIF district. So that means even after the bonds are paid off, they're paying an extra millage on their household every year, based on the tax value. Right now, it's about $1,200 a year for the average house out there. So fast forward to that, to 25 years from now, I guarantee it's based on the value of your house, it's gonna be more than $1,200 a year. I feel a little hesitancy on if the TIF does pay off the bonds early, where does the money go, when does that happen, when's it estimated to happen, based on what we're doing? And what are the plans with that money, what's the responsible thing? I would feel a little bit guilty if we continue to collect that millage, and that's coming into the city coffers, and, you know, the people that live out in the development are being taxed differently.
Well, once the bonds are paid off, they can vote to get rid of that millage.
Who votes on that?
Well, I think it's new community authorities.
Okay, so, but it has to have a legal action for that to stop. Okay.
I'm sure everyone up there will be motivated to make sure.
So what's their role in that, in that community authority? They have a voting ability in that, is it their homeowners association rep, or something?
It's like, you have the NCA, which is different from the HOA, and, yeah, so there's timeframes where they, residents, I believe, pick up, after a certain amount of time, they pick up the, like, those positions on that board, so. And then by the end, then they should fully be on that board. And they'll be able to dissolve it, or do whatever, at the end.
So in this crazy journey, I went from worrying about, do we have enough money to pay for this all over 30 years? And what's road paving cost, what's this cost, what's the line under the river, what do we have to do with that over 30 years? Does it need to be relined, does it need to be, you know, all these questions? And in the end, I end up coming back to that this may end up being a determination of what we do with surplus.
Surplus, you have surplus?
No.
There's no such thing as surplus.
Yeah. Do we, do we end up, right, 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 there's perfectly good comment. But it, come to an end of, we should be able to do this. So you go back to the moral quandary of, should we do this? Should we, should we have an understanding of what to do with the nine mil thing if it's paid off early, you know? And I think we should have an understanding of what, when is a good estimate, a good estimate of when this, the bonds are paid off?
But once they're paid off, that, the homeowners all completely control that NCA, new community, yeah, ECA.
So that's the way that works? So they would have the complete control to be able to keep that going, and decide to build a water park, or?
I don't know about that, but, something like that. I'm guessing it would go the other way, where they just ended it, but.
Okay, okay, well, that makes, that makes me feel better, that just leads me down back to the, to the other portion of my quandary.
Now, one of the things that I got back from the county auditor's office, they specifically said, there's a nine mil special assessment for 30 years that was part of the bond issue. This is assessed to all property owners, and goes directly to the Stillwater Crossing's new community authority. Once the property owner has paid this charge for 30 years, the nine mil will drop off.
So it's guaranteed to drop off after 30?
After 30. So what you're saying is, is if the bonds pay off the infrastructure early, that members of the new community authority can then move forward to have that nine mil removed?
I believe so, I'm not a lawyer, though, so.
So we all looked into the lawyer.
Some people who know.
I was reading something, I'm sorry.
No, no.
She just heard lawyer and looked up.
I did.
One of the things that was brought up, that this, this nine mil special assessment is on the table for 30 years, but what the mayor is saying is, he believes within the new community authority that is established out there, that if the bonds pay off the infrastructure early, that they could ultimately submit to have that nine mil possibly removed earlier. Are you aware of that, or do you know the specifics with that, how that works?
I don't know the specifics of it, I have heard similar to what he's referring to, but I don't know the specifics, I'd have to look into it.
Okay, and who are the members right now of the new community authority, do we know?
I'm the chair, the mayor, and Vicky Field.
Yeah, so the village gets four representatives to appoint, and then the developer gets to appoint three. And like Jeff was saying, right now, the, he's on there, I'm on there, I believe Jeremy is on there? And then the lady that works at Huntington, right, it's Huntington.
No, she works at Edward Jones.
Oh, Edward Jones, okay, yeah, Vicky's on there, right? And then you have Ron, Jason, and?
Jeff Putoff has been on it, but since he's not attended, we were gonna replace him. Mr. Putoff from Choice One, he was on there originally.
Okay, so the developers three would be Ron, Jason, and Jeremy?
Nope, Jeremy's ours.
Jeremy's ours.
Okay.
Ron, Jason, and Putoff.
Putoff, okay.
If you don't know who that is, he's the chair of Choice One.
So beyond the nine mil assessment, I would also like to know what happens with the rest of the TIF money, because the TIF doesn't end just because the bonds are paid off. It just continues, and it has to allocate that money in some fashion to somebody. I would think we need to know who that is, and how that happens. Would be important, because I should've never said the word surplus, you're right, because there is a water tower that may need to be put installed. There's gonna be repaving of that, in 30 years, that's gonna need to be repaved at least once, right? Over that 30 years, there's gonna have to be crack sealing, as careful, we think everybody drives out there, you know, pavement, pavement has needs. There's all kinds of maintenance costs that happen over 30-year lifespan in a new part of a development that costs money, you know? I think we're probably at the point where, you know, there may actually be more personnel, or vehicles need to be purchased to service the area with snow removal, you know, do we have to add another truck to be able to timely add that in? There's just, there's a lot of things. It makes me feel better to know that the bonds hopefully are paid off earlier than the life of the TIF. But then I also feel like we need to know with, what's the plan on what to do with that when it happens, you know? Is that where we pay for the water tower in the long run? Is that where we pay for the paving? Is that where we, I feel like we should have a detailed plan of what 30 years of growth is gonna look like at the south and the north. You know, and I don't feel like we're quite there yet. And I think we should be. I think that's part of knowing the sustainability, and our due diligence, and knowing the long-term outcome, because if we make a mistake, we're causing a problem for councils well, way after us, and.
Well, part of our comp plan looks out how far?
10 years.
10 years is the comp plan, how far we're looking out?
No, comp plan goes 20 years.
20 years out? So, and that's all with established infrastructure, that you know what you have, and then, of course, targeting areas different. So I take your point, that should be part of that plan, you know, embedded into that plan.
Might even make sense to make it its own chapter.
That's what I was just getting ready to, I was getting ready to say, I know it's own chapter, it's a plan for, because it's a development by its very nature, it is still developing.
Sure, sure. And hopefully, it's not the end of development.
Right, no, if the north side and the south side are built out, about the only thing I can tell you for sure is that won't be the last development during East on the 571.
Since we're talking about the CRA and that, and the changes, I'd also just like to bring up just the need and the responsibility we have for public safety, in making sure that our, now that we know we are part of an ambulance district that works with Union Township Life Squad, and the funding, and how all that goes, and how we should be represented on that ambulance board with a trustee, I think we know we have a bigger obligation to make sure that our public safety, it's squarely in our hands, and we have responsibility related to that. And, you know, I'm sure we're gonna rise to that challenge, and make sure that needs met. But just know that that falls on the village, and the current structure of continuing another CRA and TIF does not fund any increased services, or anything towards them. That's, again, part of the problem people have with the pre-94 stuff, is it doesn't go that way. So that falls back into our court. I was surprised to find out that, how much our police and fire budgets are, I've been really looking at it. I was surprised to find out what percentage of the 1.5 that goes on the income tax, the 0.5 that goes to the police and fire, that makes up less than 50% of their budget, the rest of it comes from the general fund. And oddly enough, about 16% of their budget comes from property tax. And since that property tax is under the TIF for 30 years, that's 16% of police and fire budget that's not being funded by the TIF.
Not 16%, I mean, that's 16% of whatever tiny piece or sliver that is up there, right?
Yeah, well, 16% of what, over 30 years, is millions of dollars. So hundreds of thousands, maybe, I don't know, we could do the math, but it, it just means we've gotta make sure that we're accounting for that in other ways, and making sure that they're properly funded. I would also say that we should've done this, but we should still do it moving forward. We should do an impact study on the impact of police, fire, and EMS, and have an outside agency come in and look at that. Are we right-sized, are we wrong-sized, are we too big, are we too small? I'm not throwing out any assumptions, I'm just saying we should probably have somebody come out and take a look at that, and let us know where we need to be as we start looking down the road, we start planning for the growth, we start realizing the growth. And it should, you know, public safety should be a big thing. Public safety is mentioned very little in our charter, outside of police and fire, there's nothing to mention EMS. We should probably be adding that to our charter and our codified ordinances, so that it is covered the way we do it, because we do it by being a part of an ambulance district. That was probably joined by resolution, so if we have that relationship, it should probably be reflected in our, in our in our documents, in our charter, would be my guess.
Well, in order to do the charter, though, it has to go back to the voters.
Okay.
But if we do like a ordinance, or whatever, resolution, then it just goes into our.
Okay, however, however, however we need to do it, so it legally represents, because I don't think we could really find anything, Jeff, could we? When it came back to looking at?
No, it's not.
I mean, they spent a couple of days scouring old documents to find one from how long ago?
2003. And it was only a resolution, and there's none of the attachments. Apparently, the retention schedule was interpreted that any contracts older than 15 years, they got rid of, so we have no documents, contracts that are older than that. So it's a lot of history, it's gone.
So one thing on the, on the north side, that I just want to confirm, because this was in the fact sheet, that the bond lawyer, Mr. Brosser, put together. And he specifically said that the new community authority, for the residential portion only, an additional nine mils of property tax is levied against the homes. So that means that the apartments are not, that's considered commercial.
Correct.
So the nine mil will not impact the apartments, only the homes on the north side.
That's my understanding.
Why would it be that way if the, you said the villas on the south side are under the nine mil, but Randall House isn't?
That's where they showed them, but they're differentiating between those and the apartments.
Okay.
That's not what I've got on this chart that Mr. Brosser gave us. He's got the lifestyle rental cottages listed as bringing in 4.3-plus million dollars on the nine mil special assessment charge over the course of the 30 years, I would imagine. This is showing us. It's on page 17.
Because in this, in this talking paper that was created, he has the south district, which we're currently in, and says for the residential portion, only a nine mil property tax is levied against the homes. Then at the bottom, on the north, he said, the village will offer the same incentive structure as the south district.
On the south, the, the senior cottages, or whatever, they're, they're under the nine mil. So I would assume apartments would be on the north, too, so.
But I wouldn't see why they would be, because that's the commercial portion, because it's not, that's not, that's not.
Task purposes, they're commercial.
Yeah.
I'm not sure for the.
Because, because that's not done with the Randall residence, the nine mil.
No, but it's done on the.
It's done on the cottages.
The senior cottages.
But it would be zoned differently, right? I mean, it would be zoned to residential zoning.
No, they're all, they're all within a PUD. Everything's a plan usually, though.
Never mind, that's right.
It's not a zoning issue.
Can we, can we confirm for sure if the nine mil will affect the rental properties, the commercial portion on the north side?
The apartments on the north.
Yeah, can we?
Sure.
Can we find out for sure, the answer to that?
Did you see? Okay. So while we're tuning on that, I had another question. They were, we were talking a second ago about what happens to the money coming in after the bonds fall off, and all that. Who administers the, let me find it, I just saw it on this chart? The municipal, or the TIF fund that pays out.
That would be the county auditor, I believe.
So in the chart that he gave us, you've got the treasurer and the auditor here paying to, the increased valuation to the municipal TIF fund. So it goes into that fund, but then who administers the municipal TIF fund?
I think that is the bond agency.
That would be then the Warren County Portico.
Okay.
That's what I think.
Because then they're the ones that's paying the debt, or reimbursing the school, or whatever.
Yeah, probably so.
So they would be the ones that were controlling, or in possession of that fund.
And as a governmental agency, I'm sure there's very specific regulations.
Yes, that's kind of what I was getting at, that it's, it's not the developer that's
Correct.
in control of that money after the, you know, all the obligations are met, or whatever. There's safeguard in that, that the money is still with the governmental agency, as much solace as that may give people.
But based on this chart, once the, once the bonds are paying, paid, and the auditor is no longer applying the money over to this person, where does it go?
Yep, so then, seems like this part would be cut off at some point.
Right.
And then it would just flow on the whole thing, not just the base, but the base and the increase, to flow normal to its village, city, county, you know, to its, where it should go. So, seems like that's in place to. So, seems like that's in place to do that, but I don't have the answer in front of me to.
I don't know where in my head it's sticking, but it keeps sticking in my head that after the TIP's paid off, that some portion would go 70, 30 with the school and the, and the village. And I don't know why, but I remember thinking 30 is a lot more than we receive on property tax. And that that was a big bonus, a big plus, in being able to fund the things that we need to fund to maintain development for 30 years. But I don't know where I remember that from or if it's even accurate, so take it with a grain of salt. But, but I think we should know, and I think we should know what we think our timeline is of those bonds being paid off so that we can plan how to continue to take care of our community, you know, till then and after then.
When you were saying that you were thinking the bonds would be paid off early, did you have that bond number and then kind of calculate?
Yeah, 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 yeah. It's 17.4 million dollars is the total of the, there are two bond issuers, one in, and, one in 19 and one in 20 or 21, 20. And the total was 17.4. And if you break out, they've been building about 36 houses a year, you have no improved value on Randall House till 2024 when they opened up, but the amount of money that flows from that directly to pay off the bonds is a lot. When you look at the chunk of money that comes in from the villas, just off of the 16 that are built now, and again, not counting those till 2024, and then you count the houses, just the Ryan Homes, because the north and the south are different, they've been coming online about 36 a year since 2021 and accounting for there's still about 25, I think, left to build now. If you, if you stack up what the property tax is, and this is actually a fairly low estimate, they list in, it's in the South Side Development Agreement, they give us this chart on the last page, they list about $255,000 per home. They also list the, what they think the average household income is, which I think is off, I think it's actually higher, I think we're getting more earned income than what they estimated by a little, which is good. I mean, to do, to do the digging on numbers and find out things, some things are better than you thought, is a good thing. I do believe that their estimate on the value of the house and the value of the taxes going forward is probably conservative as well. They, they estimate that each one of the 136 homes, 134 homes on the south side will be $255,000 apiece. And I think that's conservative. I think that was done before they built them, and I think more people built the biggest, nicest thing they could build in that development. And I bet if you did a random, just do a random thing, pick 10 houses through what's been built, I think you'll find the home value to be higher than, than 255,000 each home. So when you, when you apply how that money comes online, how that money starts paying towards the, the bonds, the 17.4 million, you, you end up with a little bit of math on if it continues to build out, you know, and with the school, you got to factor in the school money coming on. And I think, like how I did that, was just figured out what the school percentage takes from me, from my home property value, figured out what percentage of that was and applied it. And even with them, after four years tacking on the school money, it, it still pays off quicker than, I don't want to quote exact numbers, but it paid off significantly quicker than I would have guessed. I don't think we're looking at, you know, I was worried, when I started all this, I'm going to be honest, I'm worried, what do we do if the bonds can't be paid? What do we do if there's failure? What do we do if, you know, I always had this sky is falling chicken little fear. And I've come completely full circle in this as to figure out what do we do when this is done? And, and I think there's going to be other stuff to do with that.
So that only gets better with increased activity?
Right.
With, with commercial being added?
Well, okay.
And then also with the north side getting started. I mean, it only improves how quickly the bonds on the south side get paid off. And so, in my opinion, bottom line for me is I'm ready to move forward with this ordinance because it's exactly the same as it was on the south side. We've been moving forward with the north side since 2020 when we brought it into the village limits, when we annexed it. And it was told to us from the developer at the very beginning, the only way it can be done is if you do it exactly the same, and that's what we've got. So there isn't anything different than what we have thought all along in this. And so nothing's changed, and we obviously still want the project. And so, in my opinion, the, the sooner we move forward, as long as things are the same, the better off we are, the better off they are, and in the end, the better off the residents are up there, and also the movement on the north side, which will help grease the wheels, I think, on the south side and everything.
Well, I'll throw some more positive numbers at you. When you subtract out the, the jobs that we don't have that they estimated, the, the earned income tax coming to the village will be about $148,000 a year, or about four, about four and a half million dollars over 30 years. So if we complete the commercial development, it's a huge impact on paying off the bonds because what goes towards the bonds is the improved, the improved value. So you build a gas station, you're not paying towards the bonds with just bare land value. You're paying taxes towards the bonds on, you know, commercial property value of millions of dollars. That, that pays the bonds off even quicker. It, 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 it just benefits us in so many ways. You know, over 30 years, it's, you know, four and a half million dollars earned income tax based on, on their estimates. I, I don't know how to pitch this, I was gonna, I had a nice little thing written out and was going to say it this way and all, but I, I think we should look at forming, we keep, I personally keep asking the developer, when's this, when's this, when's this? Well, I think we've come to the time where we can't keep asking him, we need to do something.
So how about a subcommittee?
That's where I'm going with it, an economic development subcommittee?
There you go.
With a few members, yeah, you're the one I'm looking at first and foremost, Sarah. To, to, beyond her, I am, I'm open to anyone. In fact, in fact, if we got more people that want to do it, we could do two subcommittees and then they could cross their, their stuff and you've got more, many hands make light work.
Can we have a parks committee, too?
That's a whole separate thing. But I think a economic development committee that's looking at what fits for Milton, what fits for the space, what, and we understand what the developer is up against, too, by putting ourselves in their shoes. And we put some skin in the game and we start really putting an effort to, to filling these vacancies in the commercial hole that's, that's there. I, I think that's something we should look at organizing and doing, no matter what. I mean, I think it's, it's important. I'm glad you went there, too, with it.
I think part of that committee's work, too, would be to have as best understanding as we can of everything that's going on out there. You know, having two or three people focused on that, that we can ask questions to, not just to Jeff, but, you know, and so we can have another resource is the point.
And this committee wouldn't be just for out there, it'd be for.
Right. Oh, no, no, I agree, I agree, looking at the whole community.
Right.
Can I offer a suggestion?
Absolutely.
If you wanted your two committees, how about one to focus on commercial and the other on industrial?
I think that's good, that way there's not like overlap and we're not talk, cross-talking and stuff like that, because can't do that.
Right, right, right.
But, yeah. If they're separate, doing separate things, then, all right. So industrial and commercial.
And what kind, in that regards, like what kind of choice do we have when, say, Ron and Jason are finding commercial for out there and they're like, oh, yeah, we found a Domino's Pizza. Well, maybe none of us want Domino's Pizza. You know, we don't want it to close down all our local pizza places, but do we have a say-so in that? Or it's like, they got this tenant to come in and then that's, it is what it is. Why would a committee like that have a say-so in something that it gets run through council?
I'll offer my perspective. All communities want growth. One of the challenges of growth is that's competition for your existing businesses. So it's almost impossible to grow without there being some friction. So while it would be nice to say, well, we want this business, that business, you'll get the business that they think they can make money in your community.
Right.
And so, I, I've not seen a way that you can control what comes in, so.
There was something like that in a, in a local community where the backlash came in and they, everybody cried out and then the council tried to do something, and then I think the state Supreme Court came back and said, you can't do it.
I mean, we're, we're a free market economy.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and so.
Can we include, like, community members in this?
Oh, no, no, I think we would.
I mean, I feel like that would be, like, I mean, I, I'm not going to name names, but like I can think of people off the top of my head that would be helpful in something like this.
I think it would be absolutely the right thing to do. It's part, part council, some community members, and, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I feel like that would be really good. I mean, I know we have a hard time, like, there's a lot of opportunity right now in West Milton for volunteering and to be involved, and I feel like that would be really helpful, you know, to have people, because I mean, there's, there's educated, intelligent people in our community that we could, it would be helpful.
To Casey's concern, if we're integral in assessing what makes sense for our community and then we're out there trying to make those connections and connect them for the developer, that's where our control is on guiding the right people that, that accentuate the other business interests we already have in town and not overlapping or, or putting someone else out. I think that's, while it's not totally control, it's influence and, and through influence, I believe you, you have some say-so.
And there are, I mean, I know of one organization, but there are organizations whose job is to find retail, commercial, industrial organizations to come into the area. And I don't know, like, if we had, I don't know if this is even appropriate for this conversation, but if we had, like, we've got the Dayton Development Coalition and there's other organizations, if we had some, like, present, maybe say, here's what we're willing to do, you know, and having a subcommittee that brought them in and said, here's what we can do, here's the cost, let's talk about it, and then, you know, I know it takes time, but like if that was something where the economic committee is saying, okay, then you've got one point of contact instead of seven, I don't know, instead of seven people.
I can tell you when I, like, so I drive through, I cover like nine counties for my day job. I, I service a pretty wide area in two states and I drive through a lot of communities. And I was driving through the little town of Ottawa, Ohio, up in Putnam County, and I got so excited because they had this big gas station with a Taco Bell and a, so I started digging in, because everybody in Milton grows crazy over Taco Bell, it's been the rumor for decades, that's what we're going to have. And so when I looked at their business practices, how that one ended up, because Ottawa's a county seat, but it is about the same population as West Milton. And I started getting really excited, oh, maybe, maybe this is doable. And then you get down to the, how Taco Bell looks at their business model and how close they can be to other ones. The nearest other Taco Bell there was like 23 miles away in Lima, you know, where our situation is, we are five, maybe five, six miles to TIP and maybe seven, eight miles from the development to Inglewood, you know. So when you look at Taco Bell's business plan, it's not a high likelihood we're going to land that. But looking at how every thing that we think about, how do they think to figure out what's going to be a good fit? I think, you know, that's part of it, is, is understanding, when, when I started digging into this and I look at what the developer is up against in landing people and, and what we're doing, what they're trying to do, they, they really have a task and they've, they've got other things, irons in the fire. And I, I just really believe strongly that we need to come alongside and make our dreams happen, not just keep, you know, from my standpoint, me, I'm speaking for me, sitting back and saying, all right, Jason, when's this happening? All right, Ron, when's this happening? Instead, I feel like I need to be saying, well, what about this, Ron? What about, have you guys thought about this? Do some research, have some ideas, make some connections and maybe even have some leads for them, you know. I think we need to have a, have a more of a stake in our destiny.
Yeah, and I feel like, I mean, there's, there's a lot of opportunity in that field of, of work of finding, building those relationships and finding those, you know, the right contacts. Because the bigger corporations, they know where they want to go. They already have a plan. They know, and they have certain, they have certain standards and reasons to go places, like you said about Taco Bell. So I think knowing, like, what, like, here's what West Milton is, who fits in that model? Instead of, let me go find every fast food restaurant and see if we fit in their model, like, who fits into our model? And then find those people and decide, I mean, determining what our model is. And I think, like, I feel like at some point we might have to have assistance in that.
Oh, I, I'm sure, I'm sure, and we may, that group may be coming back to council and saying, we need some research dollars, or can we contract with this company for this kind of information?
Yeah.
But I think there's a lot more we, that we can do than we think with, with free technology. It's just, you know, carving out the time to do it. Again, the iPads excite me because it gives us an opportunity to be collaborative besides when we're all in the same room and outside the world of texting and.
Email.
Yeah. I think it could, you know, bring some, some things together to, to make it possible.
One of the things that.
All right.
One of, one of the things that.
Sorry.
Ron and Jason did bring up was that they did not want to have anything compete against what we already had in Milton. So that's why they said originally, at the marketplace, gas station, car wash, they were looking at the Taco John's and the Chicken Place, because then that wouldn't compete with something that's already in town. I know they have talked to Skyline, Gold Star, I think, or the other two that they've talked to, and Domino's, but I would agree with you, we don't need another.
I think we need a bank out there, and I think Huntington would like to streamline and downsize and, and we could buy their building for New City Hall, but, you know, that's just a crazy idea. But if you're listening, anyone that owns Huntington Bank.
Hey, Mr. Sheridan, one, one other thing, this, this document here, we haven't went over this. So this lays the timeline of the things that we're going to see and what we have before us. Can we go through this just so we kind of.
If you like, sure.
Understand that to make sure we know what's coming before us, what's going to be on the calendar? Because the, the ones in yellow on the first, first page under dot 40B TIP, ordinance establishing the commercial TIP, one reading, emergency, that's, I, I don't see where that's, is, is that 2504? What?
No.
No.
No. Those were steps, I don't know that they've updated this because they weren't sure we were going to take action tonight. What, let me suggest, let's take these two and come back at the next meeting with an updated one and go over at that point, if that makes more sense?
Yeah, because I'd like to know what, or if you, or if you could get it updated so.
Yes.
You can send it to us and we know exactly.
Depending on what actions you take or don't take tonight, I'll get it updated.
Because I, you know, I saw this housing survey at the bottom where the village is required to survey housing and incorporate findings and so forth. So I'm just trying to understand the method to the madness.
It should be very familiar. It's the same process as you went through on the south side.
I know, but that was eight years ago, nine years ago. I may be wrong, but I believe CM 2504 is what's highlighted in yellow.
Yes, I, I believe.
I'm sorry, yes, I, yes, it is.
Yeah, the end of the long title is declaring an emergency because we want to pass it in one reading to keep things moving, and it also has today's date on it.
Yes.
So the ordinance of sufficiency?
It's referencing the same code section.
That's 05 is sufficiency.
Okay, 05 is sufficiency.
So we haven't covered that yet.
So that's 2505. So the, on the first page, then, the ordinance establishing the commercial TIP, 28, or January, which is today, is that 2505?
No, 2505 is sufficiency, 2504 is the one in yellow.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay, maybe we can have some of that plugged in here so we, and then we can understand. Okay, maybe we can have some of that plugged in here so we, and then we can understand, you know, what's still coming before us, because there's some dates in here.
It's the steps below it.
We got the public hearings.
It is all sequential, so if you go down the line, each one...
Okay, so the public hearing, then, for twenty-five oh five will be on March the eleventh at our first council meeting.
That's what I'm gonna suggest, yes.
Okay.
There's a fairly large window if you want to call a special meeting, but if you want to do it at a regular meeting, that's really opportunity.
Okay. Everybody grasp that on the same page with those dates in there and what corresponds to what? So which one corresponds to twenty-five oh four? We know the ordinance of sufficiency is twenty-five oh five.
This one.
So this one here, the one that I mentioned first off.
The one in yellow.
That's twenty-five oh four.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I don't think we need to do it in one reading though, do we? We could do it under the normal process.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just wanting to understand how everything plugs into that schedule. Okay, I'm good. Sorry.
What was that?
It would take two readings if you're not declaring an emergency.
Right, that's what we wanted.
So you'd be second.
Or at least I was wanting.
So you wouldn't be done this meeting, you have to do it again the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
And there's time to do it.
Well, I don't know, what does that do to the rest of the timeline?
It pushes everything forward. Because it's all sequential.
Wait a minute, it throws this timeline off?
Right, that's my understanding, yes.
So if we do the first reading tonight, then we'll do the second reading at the regular council meeting.
On the eleventh.
On the eleventh, so it just pushes everything forward two weeks.
And then there's a, gotta send it to the Ohio Department of Development no later than the twelfth.
Of February?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I was just, that's...
Well, that's just fifteen days after passage.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, so, yeah, I mean, everything's gonna be two weeks.
So that would be, that would be the second reading would be February twelfth of twenty-five oh four.
Are they okay with everything being two weeks behind?
No, I mean, the whole point in doing anything at the...
Emergency.
Is to get it done, especially since it's exactly the same as it was last time. I'm in favor of one reading, having it done tonight and moving forward with the thing, but I'm not the mayor's. Nor will I be, I'm sorry. I'm just telling you what I'm in favor of.
Obviously, whatever you decide, I guess I would simply point out that you say it only adds two weeks, but if every step is delayed and that adds two more weeks, you could be into June or July.
Okay, so are we moving forward with twenty-five oh four as one reading emergency and up for approval, disapproval tonight?
And the law director was just pointing out to me, the charter indicates that an emergency ordinance becomes effective tonight, per charter, should you pass it, as an emergency in one reading.
Right. So then you can go ahead and mail that stuff off now?
Right, tomorrow, yes.
Then you would meet that date because it says no later than February twelfth. Okay.
Again, I'm just a member of council, so whatever council wants to do is what we'll do, but, actually, I'm just a member. So, straw poll.
Are there any, like, opinions from one way or the other that people are, like, strong to wait or strong to do it tonight? I mean, I get strong to do it tonight to keep them moving forward and not putting this month and months out. Is there a reason for waiting?
Just when you declare an emergency, like, you know, on something that just feels...
The term and the urgency in it, yeah.
And I totally agree with that. Ninety-nine percent of situations, I have said the same thing most times. I agree with that.
Yeah.
But because of where we didn't pass this two weeks ago, we've already delayed two weeks now, so if we...
Just catch it up.
If we delay two more weeks, then we're gonna be a month, you know?
And we'll start to act like a government or something.
Yeah, no.
So you could kind of say the term emergency is just us procrastinating in a sense, it's not like we haven't had the information, it's not like we haven't been discussing it, and not like we haven't been reviewing it.
We also pass very little legislation in an emergency status. I mean, just because, you know, we want to do it the right way. Like I say, I'm just a member, if everyone is more in favor, so, yeah, emergency, emergency...
I'm good.
Okay, then, yeah, we'll just do it the way it's written. All right.
Can we go to the next item, Mayor?
Yeah, next item.
That is Proposed Resolution CM twenty-five oh five, that is the next piece of legislation that's required to move the process forward, and the primary issue there is the, having the public hearing, establishing when the public hearing is and that it would be scheduled on March eleventh was the only council meeting date within the window of opportunity that the legislation specifies. Now, you could do it another time and have a special meeting, or you could do it during your March eleventh council meeting. And this has to do with the CRA. I think you're all familiar with the phrase, "Your last bite at the apple." This is your one and only opportunity to change the village's existing CRA, and you're changing it by adding the property that is Stillwater Crossings North. So anything after that, any other projects, are gonna be a post-CRA, and so from the school, that's a positive, from a developer, that may or may not be an issue, but it would be a different type of project going forward. I did explore with the attorneys, other possibilities of change, and we really don't have any other options. We don't have any of the land that's in the village and that's not already in the CRA, and I can't put it in the CRA if we have an annexed. There are all the different things that I threw out, "Well, what about this?" Because I wanted to make sure we took advantage of that bite of the apple as much as we possibly could. And what I found was, this is it. There's no other options to expand the benefit to the village other than adding this property. That make sense?
So CM twenty-five oh five is to set up a public hearing to include the north, the north side development into the CRA?
You're certifying that the application to modify it meets your approval, it's sufficient, and establishing a public hearing to notify the public of the change you're making.
Okay.
All right, accurate?
Yes.
So it's pretty simple, that's why it's a resolution.
And then the three notices go out on the subsequent weeks, and then we have the public hearing on the eleventh. Okay.
Should I go on?
Yep.
Number seven, this is a resolution to authorize me to enter a contract for purchase of server and computers. This is, again, Mr. Flannery's recommendation. I think the resolution mentions the additional cost. The expected price is forty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty-four cents, and this is the second piece of updating the technology in the village, and this is the technology that all of the staff use, new server and so forth. My understanding is that we get our best price in January, and so we really want you to approve it tonight if you can, so I can sign it tomorrow and get it ordered.
And this was necessitated because...
The other hardware's obsolete?
Obsolete, yeah, it's not gonna be supported anymore.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Any questions on that particular piece of legislation?
Just, what's, this is, because I'm not a tech guy, what's an optiplex microform factor? What are factors, what is that?
I'm not a tech guy either, which is why I have Mr. Flannery to make these recommendations. He's worked with the village twenty years. I don't know, but he says we need it.
All right, this is your chance to look smart, Scott. What's a Camaro?
It's a car, it's a sports car.
Okay.
There is, wasn't there a picture in there?
It's a computer.
Right, somebody, it's the name of it, right?
Yeah. A mayor's an IT guy.
It's a computer.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Should've turned it over to you.
I just knew that was gonna land on you.
Those are on the agenda when we go into regular session, assuming you go into regular session. This next one, number eight, Proposed CM twenty-five oh seven, this is, if you may recall last year, because I'm under a contract that the finance director cannot give me the across-the-board increase that you approved for all of the staff without modifying the contract, so this time we're making a modification. I think the language is such that going forward, anytime there's an across-the-board increase, I'll get no less than that. So, and I, because that's not urgent, it's not in, on the agenda when we go into regular session, I'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting that's a regular session. That make sense to everybody?
Yep.
Okay. Number nine is, our planning board received a request for rezoning at two ninety West Market Street. That's the little white house on the corner there of Market and Jay as you go around. The lady who lived there her entire life passed away, left it to the broom balls, their neighbor, and they would like to rezone it from R one C to R two with the possibility of dividing it. It's only got a two-bedroom house, but it's laid out very oddly, and they think they could turn it, like, into a duplex or have one family on one side and another family in the other. So they asked to have it rezoned, there was no objection, and so, but it does go to the council. They recommend to you that you approve it, and the paperwork's in your packet, and again, that's, I think that is on the agenda to move forward if you're comfortable with that.
My only thing that I had an issue with it at first when I thought about it is having another rental in town. But I could see, too, where maybe that would be a good opportunity for possibly like a, I don't know, a bed and breakfast or a VRBO type thing where that's located at.
Right. I don't think they plan on, none of the plans they mentioned are strictly that, it's more that when broom ball engineering hires new people and they need a place to stay, instead of putting them up in a hotel, they could stay on one side of that, or family members who might be next to them and take up half of them out of the house.
I did talk to Steve a bit the other night.
Good, great.
And had mentioned, I thought that would be a great opportunity, you know, for that, for, and I mentioned what had been done with the home that was across the street from La La Sugar Land and turning that into a VRB, Airbnb. So I did throw that, I did throw that bug in his ear for something to think about, but...
Are you comfortable moving forward on that when we go into regular session?
Yeah.
I am, just knowing that the owners that own the property live right next door, and when you have a rental property of any type, when the owners are nearby, it has an impact on what happens and, you know...
I believe...
Even if you got somebody move in, you don't know, and the shenanigans start, shenanigans stop pretty quick when the owner lives next door.
I'm pretty sure they went door-to-door to all their neighbors and talked about it before they came to us. I mean, they've been in that neighborhood forever.
Yep, and none of, no neighbors or anybody objected to anything or came to the meeting?
No, no objection whatsoever.
Okay.
All right?
All right.
Okay, next item, go ahead, Mayor.
Next, I'll open up the floor for any motions to go into a regular council session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We'll open the regular session. All right, is there any comments from citizens regarding tonight's legislative? All right, seeing none, we'll move into the ordinances and resolutions. Worst on the agenda is CM dash twenty-five dash zero four.
Some ordinance declaring the improvement to certain parcels within the municipality to be a public purpose, exempting one hundred percent of the value of such improvements from real property taxation for a period of thirty years, requiring the owners of parcels for which improvements are declared to be a public purpose to make annual service payments in lieu of taxes during the period of exemption, authorizing the county treasurer to pay a portion of the service payments in lieu of taxes to the Milton Union Exempted Village School District in the Miami Valley Career Technology Center, describing the public infrastructure improvements made to be made or in the process of being made to directly benefit the parcels for which improvements are declared to be a public purpose, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such service payments, approving related matters and declaring an emergency. You want me to read the whole thing?
Just say it.
Is that what we're doing? That was just the title, so...
That was just the title of the whole thing?
Yes.
It's six pages.
It is six pages long, so...
How do they do that when they don't have to read it all?
You'd have to waive the reading by a vote of at least four members.
All right, is there any interest in waiving the reading tonight?
I motion we waive the reading tonight.
So is there a second?
Second.
Second, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will waive the reading of CM dash twenty-five dash zero four.
I appreciate that, thank you.
So now is there a vote to adopt the ordinance on an emergency basis?
I would say, does council have any questions, but we sort of just went through this, but if you do have additional questions, are there any? No? All right, is there any motions for CM dash twenty-five dash zero four?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance CM dash twenty-five dash oh four.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Dorman?
I am going to preface my vote with the statement that I am not against development. I am totally one hundred percent gung-ho on that, however, I do not agree with this current mechanism which is being used. So it is not a, it's with a humble heart that I say no.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Ms. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Fogle?
No.
Mr. Satters?
Yes.
Mayor Hearst?
Yes.
All right. All right, we'll see, next on the agenda is CM dash twenty-five dash zero five, Ms. Brash.
Determining the sufficiency of the application and written consent to add certain parcels of real property to the Stillwater Crossings New Community Authority District, to amend the petition for establishment of the Stillwater Crossings New Community Authority as a new community authority under chapter three forty-nine of the Ohio revised code, and to set a date for a public hearing on the application as required by law.
Can we waive this one too, the whole read? It's, I mean...
All right, are there any motions for waiving the reading of CM dash twenty-five dash zero four?
I motion we waive the reading of Resolution CM twenty-five dash oh five.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, ayes have it. We will waive the reading of CM dash twenty-five dash zero four. Next on the agenda is CM dash twenty-five dash zero five? We're not doing that one?
Are you gonna see if you pass it?
Oh, wait. Yeah, no, I'm just moving on. Are there any questions for council on CM dash twenty-five dash zero four?
I mean, five, zero five.
Zero five. Man, it's late. All right, I'll open the floor for passing of this ordinance. Any motions?
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion that we approve Resolution CM dash twenty-five dash oh five.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Dorman?
No.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Ms. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Fogle?
No.
Mr. Satters?
Yes.
Mayor Hearst?
Yes.
All right, so now are we on oh six?
We are on six.
Okay. Next is CM dash twenty-five dash zero six, Ms. Brash.
The resolution to authorize the municipal manager to enter into a contract for the purchase of a server and computers from Dell Technologies, whereas there is a current need to update a server and several computers within the municipality for the purpose of conducting municipal business, and whereas the finance director has received a quote from Dell Technologies for the purchase of a Windows Server twenty-twenty-five data center, two Dell Latitudes... Latitudes 5550, 12 Optiplex microform factors 7020, and six Dell 24 monitors, and the total amount of $40,872.84, and whereas the municipal manager believes it is in the municipality's best interest to enter into a contract with Dell Technologies to purchase said equipment. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the municipality of West Milton, Ohio, Section 1, council approves the purchase of a Windows Server 2024 data center, two Dell Latitudes 5550, 12 Optiplex microform factors 7020, and six Dell 24 monitors, and the total amount of $40,872.84 from Dell Technologies. Section 2, the municipal manager is hereby authorized to execute a contract for the purchase of said equipment. Section 3, this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after its passage.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
And I did pull that up on my phone, and I saw that it's a nice tower computer, so that confirmed things, so appreciate that. Thank you, Scott.
Camaro, we're getting the Camaro, right? That's right, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like that.
All right. I'll open the floor for any motions on 25-06.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance CM-25-06 as read.
Second. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Dorman?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Ms. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Fogle?
Yes.
Mr. Satters?
Yes.
Mayor Hearst?
Yes.
All right. Uh, next is CM-25-08, Ms. Brash.
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of West Milton as adopted by Chapter 150.006 of the West Milton Code of Ordinances, whereas the West Milton Planning Board received a petition to modify the zoning district boundary of a parcel of real estate located at 290 West Market Street in the municipality of West Milton, Ohio, known as parcel number L39020880, approximately 1.444 acres from R1C residential to R2 residential, and whereas council has received an affirmative recommendation from the West Milton Planning Board to amend the official zoning map of West Milton by changing the zoning district boundaries of the parcel of real estate being described as parcel number L39020880 from R1C residential to R2 residential, and whereas Section 150.319C requires council to modify zoning boundaries by ordinance as prescribed by West Milton Charter, Section 4.14. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of West Milton, Ohio, that Section 1, council accepts the recommendation of the West Milton Planning Board to modify the zoning district boundary of the parcel of real estate described as parcel number L39020880, approximately 1.444 acres, or, from R1C residential to R2 residential, see Exhibit 1 attached. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect 10 days after the second reading and approval by council.
All right. Thank you. All right. Uh, next line item is any old business?
It's first read.
Oh, that's right. Never mind. Sorry.
Good catch, though. I mean, I have been off the game today. All right, is there any old business tonight? Any new business tonight?
Uh, just to follow up on the idea of creating the, the subcommittee, I don't know how we formally go about doing that, um, but I think, I think we, we should do that since we're moving forward. I think it should be all hands on deck, full speed ahead, um, and I would like to be on it, just to reinforce my commitment to the, the growth and development of our community and...
All right. So, if anyone's interested in joining the subcommittee for commercial economic development, please send Dayon an email, he's going to lead that charge, uh, and then from there, depending on how many he gets, you know, he can, he can start from there.
I'll throw my name in the hat.
You've got to send the email, man.
Well, I'll send him, I'll send him an email because I, I've done a lot of research on this. It'll be like 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning.
That's right.
Just turn your phone off tonight.
Yeah, I'll send it to you at 2:00.
All right.
I do, I do have one question with the business, new business, old business. I know it was on the agenda, but I'm assuming at the next workshop, you're going to give us the update with Haskett-Hamilton, is that correct?
We moved it to the next workshop.
Okay. Just, just wanting to confirm.
Oh, that's fine.
Thank you.
Question for new business, old business, whatever, um, and, and we don't have to discuss this now, or it's a question for Ben, but you know that North 48 is not getting paid for a number of years, I don't think, at least by ODOT. Is there anything we can do in the meantime, because it's like speed bumps going down 48, or going up 48 out of town? Is there anything we can do to mitigate that in between times if it's going to be a number of years before they're going to repave?
Yeah, I can get with Wagner Paving and Bob Spitler, who's been out there for a very long time, and just get his thoughts on, um, I think the majority of them are bumps, not dips.
Right, they are. They're like, it's like speed bumps.
So, um, they went down some, just because of traffic, because they, they were worse, so I guess I was kind of waiting to see how much they'd go down, um, but they put in flow, backfill, which means I knew they wouldn't go that much, so I can meet with Bob Spitler and see if it's something where we could possibly mill those flat. That would be, probably, that'd be really the only thing we could do, would be mill them flat versus, I mean, having to dig all of them back out.
Right, yeah.
But, yeah, I'll, I'll meet with him, he may have some ideas, and...
I understand, we don't want to necessarily put money into it, knowing it's, you know, going to be repaved at some point, but again, if it's going to be a many over years...
Right. And I hadn't got a chance to talk to Manager Sheridan about it yet, but we're getting, obviously Hayes Street will be done this year, and possibly having some other communications with ODOT about the fact that it was a major community improvement that was very much needed, and seeing if they could possibly work with us on the schedule.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
I have one more thing, because I'm thinking about it now, but the comprehensive land use plan, where are we on that?
We are working on the Parks and Recreation Chapter, kind of got put on hold, and they're working on transportation, looking at both pedestrian and vehicular transportation.
They're working on both simultaneously?
Well, they, they had started on recreation, and then that kind of got put on hold because several of the projects didn't materialize as fast. So, we moved to transportation, and I know they're looking at creating some bike lanes. They've got some recommendations on where we could try to put some bike lanes in the village, and deal with the omission of sidewalks in certain areas, they're going to make some recommendations based on their data, this is where it would make the most sense to first invest in some new sidewalks. Uh, I've got a call tomorrow with Calabot to get the latest update, and then I'll also talk to them about whether or not, with its own chapter looking just east of the river, and, and how, what that might look like.
Okay. Can you send an email or something to update us?
Sure.
Just, I've just been on council for like a year and a half, and I've never seen anything. That's been curious.
We've got, we've got the other chapters, I mean, we, we've got Binder that's got the chapters that are already done.
Can I get that?
Absolutely.
That'd be great, thank you.
It'll, it'll be on your tablet in PDA form, PDF format.
That's going to be amazing.
I've already got it in the binder, he's staying in the binder.
You're sticking to your three-ring guns? Um, one other piece of new business I wanted to, to bring up throughout the, the course of looking at stuff with EMS and, and that, and looking at the, the roles and responsibilities, it becomes very apparent that there's a lot of hats worn by a lot of people, a lot of positions that are supposed to be, exist in our charter, and theoretically end up falling all on one person, and one of those hats is the safety director, and it's an extra hat that the manager has to wear, and I just wanted to throw it out there, the, the idea of maybe creating an actual different scenario for the safety director, um, you know, think about who else it would make sense to, to wear the hat within the system, and, and what could, because ultimately, the safety director always answers back to the village manager, so it's, it's not like it changes anything that way. But, um, just feel like there's just 10,000 things on our manager's plate, and if we could change things around and take a couple things off, um, that, that, you know, that would be beneficial for, for everyone involved, and, not trying to throw the police chief under the bus, but it, it would really make sense that, with our police department, being on, onsite, whether it's an accident, EMS is there, onsite, because it's a fire, they're there, and they're the only 24-hour group with the train, chain of command that goes back through the chief already to the city manager, um, it, to me, would make sense to look at how we would have to change things to make that possible. Again, not meaning any negative reflection on how it's been handled in the past, I just feel like we have too many, too few people wearing too many hats. I, I'd also like to see us get a, a city planner or something for it, too, but if we really want to move forward, we really want to do things, then, then we should look at upgrading our, our staffing and how we do things, and do them the most efficiently, and things that make the most sense, and I feel like there's room for that kind of change in the alignment that would benefit the village, benefit the, our community, and overall hopefully be a, a relief of extra things that are burdened on our city manager already, and it's, keeps in the same alignment, but, but, you know, changes the, the focus and energy that someone else might have to throw at that, and when we think of safety in general, I think we, we often think of, you know, police fire and EMS, and, and the one person that's always in that scenario, no matter what, is, is the police, so...
I think Jeff's just got to use his magic wand to make him the safety director. We, we did issue that, you, that wand, right?
I must have misplaced that one.
And I hope, I'm not trying to speak for anyone involved with the chief or, or the manager, just putting a thought out there and, and the consideration, so, all right.
I have a question for Ben, if you don't mind. Uh, I think it was the last council meeting, we were given the West Milton Recycling Program with the cardboard and recycling.
Mm-hmm.
Just a question. I was looking through some of that. How are things going? Are things, since we got the cardboard dumpster there, it seems like things are being maintained better, there's not stuff all just left there, people are doing a better job as a whole with that, just wanted to see, from your perspective, how, how are things going?
Did the packet that you get have a memo that said how much we'd gotten this year? Or was it just...
Not tonight, but previously.
No.
Previously, I think.
I just got the one that just had all the, all the numbers.
Okay, see, I think I sent the wrong file. That's kind, that's my spreadsheet that tracks it, and I also had a flyer that brought you up to speed on...
Oh, I didn't get that.
How much? That was my fault, because I sent the wrong, I sent the Excel program, not my flyer, but I mean, summing it up, it's going extremely well.
Okay.
We haul close to as much cardboard as we do regular recycling, and if you can, I mean, that's, so that's a lot of cardboard, and they only charge us like $25 a ton for that, so we're saving a lot of money with cardboard recycling. Really, it's, we didn't have any violations last year, and the biggest reason for that is, is like Steve, Jimmy, Joey, and the guys go out, they go through it almost daily, and pull stuff out of there that's not supposed to be in there, um, just because, just because it's plastic doesn't mean it's recyclable, plastic and that kind of thing, um, so it's really been them guys that's making it as successful, um, so, yeah, it's, it's gone real well. We've, I'll try to include that flyer in the next packet that you were supposed to get.
Yeah, if you get that, that'd be great. Okay, cool. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Are there any of those things that you see, um, I know like Montgomery County will do it, I don't know if Miami County puts it out, where it's like a styrofoam pickup day, or like, anything like that, that we would ever have in the, I don't know, in the community?
Um, we could do that, but we, we would have to go with guidance from Miami County as far as what we would do with it. Styrofoam's a little bit more difficult as far as like our refuse trucks and the packer, because the packer kind of relies on weight to take it in, and cardboard, if you get, you know, all dump, a toter and cardboard will be on top, and it'll start floating around, it's hard to get it to go, so we would have to, we'd have to figure out how to do it and plan it properly.
I didn't know if the county did something, or, you know, like the paint and the hazardous stuff. I don't know if there was ever like a...
They, I know they do hazards at least once or twice a year minimum. I can see if I can get a schedule of events from them and put it on our website.
And that's what I was talking to Jeff about the other day, our Everbridge app, like, if we could get something going more so, where we could put stuff, and if it was a county event, it doesn't have to be with something, but, yeah, like the styrofoam drop-off at the Miami County, or, I don't know, just trying to use this app more, if that app is not our thing, is there a better one we can get, or something?
It's a, it's a great app, it really is. It's easy to use, uh, there's probably 200, about 280, almost 300 people signed up for it. We probably need to put that out again for, just to make sure everybody's aware of it, and keep the scan code where people can scan that and easily access it, uh, so it is a great app, um, I don't have any issues with it, uh, and we've gotten good responses from the folks, and it also has that extra part where it's, gives you inclement weather, especially in the summer when there's tornado warnings.
This is just a goofy thought, but, um, if we had a big sign with a QR code, a poster for people to, because they come in, they can do that, and then when we open up meetings, instead of a blank thing that they're showing on in the minutes leading up, if something like information we want to share is what people see, and Tom, I'm talking to you back there, um, so that, what, what's in the, the prelim time going up to council meeting maybe has like that information that we want to share on there, and, and, you know, it'd be a good time to, to share some of that.
Yeah, I, I, I fully agree, and I don't know, you know, a lot of people are watching on their phones, so you're not going to scan a QR code when you're watching on your phone, but if it's the link to go directly to download the app...
Yeah, 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 tap link. I'm sure Tom can work some magic there, he's amazing.
In the video, just to get more usage, because I would say there's so many more things, with the snow plowing, or leaf pickup, or remember bulk trucks, like all these things, that we could be putting a couple messages a week out, you know?
Sure.
To people.
I find it useful.
I know.
I mean, I wasn't an early adopter on it, but...
All right. Next is going into an executive session. We need a motion to go into executive session?
We have that thing, somebody's going to read. I've never done this in a decade. Uh, Mayor, I move that the council enters into a brief executive session, this is pursuant to Section 4 dot 12, whatever B, 5, A, B, or C, to consider the appointment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, compensation of a public employee, official licensee, or regulated individual. B, to consider the purchase of property or public purpose, or for sale of property. C, conference, I don't know if we're supposed to do this or not, with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject to pending or imminent court action.
It's actually for C, the last one.
Okay, so we're for C, now I'm just going to need to read them all.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, so we will now be going into executive session. When we return, there'll be no additional business, uh, those who are here in the audience